Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Lazaro? Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Here.
Alderman Shaki?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
We had, do we have a quorum? I need a motion to approve the minutes from July 12, 2012. That is my motion.
Make that motion. Second.
Any changes, corrections? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstained. Item number... Four is report and recommendation change order number two. Maximal in the amount not to exceed... Five hundred thirty-three, five hundred thirty thousand, three hundred ninety dollars on the north, north wastewater treatment plant administration building. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Coles?
All right. Five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You just had one for a hundred and some odd thousand. So that's approximately, approximately another, oh, we'll say seventy-five, seventy-five hun- uh, seventy-five thousand. Almost, almost a million dollars. And now you have, and I heard somewhere through the grapevine that you got one coming up for five million dollars. Uh, and we, we, we promised to pay for that thing nineteen thousand, nineteen million dollars, and we ended up with approximately twenty-six million dollars on it by the time it's gonna be done. We also started out, we could've had it done for thirty-five thousand, and without all these, uh, add-ins and, and changes and stuff like that, it would've been all, all at one time. We're paying for something more than what we, we planned on, and I don't know where we're gonna get the money. So, I mean, th- these changes, I know that have to be done, but when we figured the plant, we've, we didn't figure these changes, and now they're coming up one right after another. So I, I'm, I'm a little, uh, say, disturbed. Let's put it that way. All right? That's being, that's being a, a nice way to put it. Uh, all right? I'm done.
Jeff, go ahead.
Well, I'll try to summarize. Alderman Coles, you are correct. When we initially went out for bid for the Phase 1A, the project, we didn't have this portion, um, the admin building in that. Um, but the project came in under the bid amount by roughly five hundred thousand dollars. So at that point, the council asked H.R. Green with that extra money we had on the side from the bid coming in under, to go ahead and engineer the admin building because we knew that it needed to be replaced. And since we saved some money on the original bid, roughly the amount of the new admin building, they engineered it. And now this is, we're come to a point where we've got the price for that new admin building, and we're paying for that with the savings we had that we came under on the original bid. That's why this got added in there per the council's request to engineer that building with the money we already saved. So this is not extra add-on money that somebody miscalculated. This was a, a building that we purposely put in after we came in under on the original bid. And the other item you referred to is gonna be the next item on the agenda.
Okay. Alderman Shark? Yeah, the new treatment plant, I've heard the engineers say that it's going to be a one-man operation, basically. Is that correct? There's one person that'll be able to run it?
It will take more than one person to run the plant. Their current staffing levels would be appropriate for operating, uh, the new expanded plant. There are some automation improvements to it that will make it, uh, simpler to operate than it currently is, but the overall processes are a little more complicated. But it, the staffing level should be consistent with what you've, um, you know, currently are at, at the plant.
We were told it would be just one person. But the question I have is that we've been talking about perhaps buying a new building or, uh, re relocating our public works, and matter of fact, we're looking at one building that was very excessive in, in, in area, and they were talking about moving everything over there. Now, I don't understand why we're gonna spend a half a million dollars for a new public works building at the treatment plant if there's just gonna be, even if there's two or three people there, when we may pick up some property where we'll want those people to be over at the other site because we have so much room, like we, that, that one place for so much money. Uh, I think this is something that perhaps doesn't need to be done right now and can be held off until we find out what we go, what we're going to do with public works, what the total building we do get will be, and decide then whether we need to, a building here at the treatment plant specifically for offices for just a couple people. It's an awful lot of money, half a million dollars. That was a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
First point of your question, the, the admin building's site-specific to that location. So you're not gonna put employees at another loca- that is site-specific, treatment plant employees at that admin building. So it's not gonna matter what you're doing with any other public works facility. You still need a building on that site to house those employees. It wouldn't go into a new building if and when we ever got the new building off-site. This is site-specific for treatment plant employees.
But...
And the other ques- the, the building that's there now is structurally deficient and is failing, and this is just...
What, I mean, is something else going into that where that building is? The lab? Part of the treatment plant itself going in there?
The new building will also be a new lab to replace the existing lab, uh, and existing admin, uh, structure admin building. Also, where the existing building is, the intention is to demolish it and make that parking area, and move some of the parking that was on the entrance road coming in. So we'd relocate the parking to a, you know, a better location at the plant.
Well, I, I do remember it being said, "The plant can be run by one person," and I can go back and find where that was. And I do remember it being said that, "Well, we can send over, if we get a building bigger, we can send over the people from the treatment plant building over there too, so we don't need it there." And now we're talking, we're going, changing our mind and going back the other way, and we want another building for five hundred, well, over, over half a million dollars, and I just don't see the need for it. Especially today, when, when buildings are going for so cheap. Mr. Woods?
Yeah. This building's something, actually, that we've talked about since the inception of this plan. It was part, this was gonna come in and, and Phase 2 anyway, and as, as the city manager pointed out, it isn't, you know, uh, gonna house fifty employees, the whole, uh, public works. It's just the people that are germane to running the plant and, and running the lab there to keep us in compliance. It's also, was it a pivotal, uh, element in getting the parking, the aesthetics, and everything else to work out there? I mean, this building has been talked about. This is just, it's coming down that we're gonna get to, you know, build it and build it with savings in Phase 1, as opposed to it coming up in Phase 2 where we'd have to fund it ourselves. So, I mean, it, it shouldn't really come as a surprise, and I know some of the issues that you're talking about, but, you know, we, when you factor in the, all the structural issues with the existing building, the, the site-specific parking issues and design issues and aesthetic issues, um, this is something that really needs to be done, whether we do it today or in Phase 2.
You done? Alderman Shark? I mean, Mike?
This lab's gonna be the admin building, storage building, also for the electronics, also. La, la, lab electronics.
Yes, the main components will be, uh, the, a new lab building, uh, new office for the plant superintendent, along with all of the, the SCADA controls, the operating system, and the displays for, uh, for viewing it, and a conference room for, for training personal reasons.
So obviously a needed building.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Jeff, you said that was the savings from what we, the original bid was? How much was the original? I mean, it can't be the same, a dollar amount.
No, it was, uh, eight point, eight point nine was the bid, and, uh, we estimated nine point four, so it's roughly right around the cost of the building. So we built those numbers into our original bond issuance.
But the next thing is not.
Correct.
So that's an add-on.
Next item is totally different.
What's the square footage of the, is it the same square footage?
No, the building, to fit it in the location where it is, ended up being at twenty-two hundred square feet. Our original estimates were based on an eighteen-hundred square foot building, so the building, uh, grew a little bit to accommodate, you know, what it was programmed for, for the uses, and to fit it into this, that spot on the site.
What? Continue. What do we have there now?
The current admin building complex. It includes locker rooms, bathrooms, motor control centers for the raw water pump station, the pump station itself, and then the lab building, three, four offices and a break room.
Square footage?
Square footage? You're probably closer to a four thousand square foot building now.
So you're going...
The locker rooms are gonna be part of, they're getting moved out of this building, so they would no longer be used. They're in one of the new buildings going in in the next phase of construction. So a lot of the uses of the existing building were eliminated by the other activities or the other planned construction. This was an opportunity to consolidate it into a smaller, newer, more energy-efficient, more attractive building that really completes the, that entire facade around the park.
So we're adding four times as much?
No, we're adding a building that's half the size of the existing.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Shark?
Yeah, my, my problem is, you know, we still have the same administration and office in Washington, and who knows if we'll have them for another four years? And we're, we seem to be spending money, uh, like we've got an overabundance. And I'd like to see us spend the money when it's really needed and when it makes sense and not spend it if it's just a frill or, or something that really isn't necessary. There's a big difference between necessary and something just to add on or whatever. And I, I can't see where this, this kind of money would, it would take to build a two-hundred or two-thousand square foot building. I mean, is it gonna be bomb-proof or... Can it have the same security doors? I don't, that's, that's my opinion.
Okay. Let me, let me sum something up. We looked, believe me, we looked hard at this building. If you go out on that building now, in the one corner of that building, it's sinking. Okay? It's uneven building, it's, that's sinking into the ground. Okay? You're, you're, it's, it came in under budget, like we said. We aren't, we didn't add any money to this project. We didn't come back here or the council, we already gave a permission to go out and design it. Already, we signed a contract with them to design it. Okay? We, like, again, we are not adding more money into this project. We are taking what we saved. And we also got some deductions already on that project already out there. Credit coming back. So we still under budget that we called for. We still making the, the budget that was approved here. So it's, it's not that we adding this. If, if you guys think we adding this money in, we aren't. It was money that was allocated on the proposal, the con, the bids that we went out to get, and the bids came in lower.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. So kinda two-part question. I think this'll help me understand as well as others, that, uh, what would happen if this building was not, um, torn down and rebuilt as proposed in the half a million dollar proposal? And then secondly, um, this, uh, removal and replacement of new, where is it in the master plan of the treatment plant? Was it, like said, in Phase 2? Was it not even in the plan? So if you can help me with those two questions, I think that'll help a lot.
Got it.
Like I mentioned, with the existing building, it is, uh, and Alderman Wesley, uh, mentioned, it's in pretty bad shape structurally in a number of areas. Uh, the lab itself is outdated and could use, you know, be updated. So we're looking at modernizing it and replacing it. The existing building there, also, a lot of the functions that are in there will be no longer needed with the plant upgrades that are occurring. The motor control center, the locker rooms, the, um, pump station that's there and the screen building. So all of that would be, yeah, basically a vacant building to be demolished at some point. The other thing is the aesthetics on it. That building had been added on to several times, and it's, you can see where the, it is. It's not a, a, a uniform, you know, view or, you know, vision from the park and from the entranceway. So the new building does kind of complete that whole, um, facade that we've been working on, uh, and that was one of the critical aspects of the overall planning of the project was how it impacted the park. So that's, um, you know, it would be a, a good solution for, uh, the situation there, solving problems with the existing. The other thing is, uh, the parking area that would be moved off the entrance road, uh, would make that whole area just much more, you know, functional. Regarding when it was planned for in the project, it was discussed in Phase 2 being added into it as part of the overall plans. And on the, the prioritized list of items for the functionality of the plant, uh, it was, you know, a little bit further down the list than some of the other, uh, parts that we're putting into it to, you know, keep it running properly. But it is a, it is something that the existing building is, uh, becoming obsolete and will be obsolete when this project is finished, and this new one will, um, kind of finish the whole project off.
Okay, so, so we're essentially moving this up in the process, and it's something that is needed and, and was planned for, and the value, it looks like it's clearly there to me. And then we're using the same funding sources as we would've if the nine point four million, we were having to pay for that, correct? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woods? Mayor?
Ed, you said Phase 2. You really meant Phase 1B, right? That was gonna be in the next, actually, it's in the next phase, right?
Actually, though, it was in Phase 2, the, the, for when the plant would be completely upgraded to the higher flow rate, um, that was, you know, in the future. It's, it was on the list of things to do at the plant. But one of the, the reasons that it's real attractive to do it as this part of the project is the construction sequence. We can get in there and work on it now, uh, while it's under construction. If we were to come back and do this later, the future construction costs would be much higher, uh, because of it being all built and surrounded by new structures. So that was one of the reasons that it was really considered looking at doing it at this time on this project. And the cost per square foot is actually coming in about two-hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot for the commercial building, which is, uh, lower than what we normally budget and estimate for them. We're usually up in the three hundred dollars a square foot range. So the costs we're seeing are, are very good construction costs. Uh, we've actually had it looked at, and if this was to be put out for bid as a separate project, we were getting numbers in the six-hundred and fifty to seven-hundred thousand dollar range for this building to be built. And so, but because of the work we're doing around it, that's why it was considered an opportune time to save some money on this structure, uh, in the overall scheme of the projects.
Mr. Woods?
Let me just add, um, you know... For, for years, we neglected that plant till it just literally fell apart. I mean, you had, the, the pipes were so rotten, we were, it's going in there on an emergency basis, spending two, three hundred thousand dollars to run, you know, pipes all over the world, you know, to get, just so that thing could run. If that plant goes down, what do you think the cost is? You know? We're, we're putting in all-new equipment, all-new electric, new SCADA system, you know, we're reducing the footprint of the building, we're not trying to get a bigger one, we're building the building with money we saved already. It's gonna enhance the building, the aesthetics of the building, increase the parking. The benefits far outweigh, uh, the negatives to this. And, and it was, in the plans anyway, just, you know, two steps down the road as opposed to today. And I think it, with the savings, it just works out that we're able to, uh, you know, take advantage of that. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Any other questions? I have a motion on the floor. I have a second on roll call vote, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Let him pass this. Item number, item number five, report and recommendation contract award, admit H.R. Green, not to exceed two-hundred and fifty thousand... For wastewater treatment plant, UV filter, dissection, building, engineer design. That is my motion.
Second. Not to exceed. I have a second. Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Ed, um... We're adding two-hundred and fifty thousand into this plant now. You know, it's always been a concern of mine of add-ons and this, this and that. And I know, I understand how these filters work now, and I think we do need it, but I'm not an engineer. What am I gonna see? We're in Phase 1 now. Please tell me, this was my concern when we started this, these add-ons and stuff. What am I gonna see further down here? I, if that was, Stefan was here, I, he probably could answer that, but I don't see him here, so...
Go ahead.
This project was added to the, the scope really as a response to the mercury limit that NP, the, our recent NPDS permit renewal included a limit for mercury removal. We, uh, agreed with the state, signed a, um, consent agreement or a compliance agreement to first do the new fil- or the new clarifier that we're installing now as part of this project that we're doing. And then if it doesn't remove all the mercury, our second step would be to add these filters to it. And we've made a commitment that, you know, if we exceed our discharge limits for the mercury, we would build this, um, at the very next stage of the project. When we were, met with IEP A and discussed that with them, that was why we split the project up into Phase 1A and 1B, was we had to get this mercury out of our, our effluent as quickly as we could. The state said it didn't depend on SRF funding or anything. You've gotta go out and treat the mercury. So we said, "Okay, we'll put the clarifier in first, it's part of our planned project, and we'll see how it works." The filters were the, the secondary position for that, and they're really, the mercury is particulate, it's just floats around on the little particles in the water, and some of it can get past the clarifier. Well, the filters are the secondary position, they'll, you know, pull it out. It's kind of, it's a long answer, but it's something that we would have to do at this plant. When we did the overall design at a thirty percent design level, this was part of it, and we know this is gonna be the, the next phase of expansion out here at the plant, was this, uh, effluent filter and UV building. We were looking at it as an opportunity to include this structure within the SRF funding. To do that, we'd have to complete this design now and get it part of the SRF funding package so that we can then get the bids and look at it to see if we want to, you know, build it next year when we get the bids in for it. But to meet that schedule, we have to do this design here very quickly so we can finish it up and get it down to the state as part of our overall loan package, which needs to occur, um, within about a month and a half.
Okay. But...
The second part of your question, you know, what else is down the line? For your current flow rates, this would, you would not need to do any future expansions for quite a while, um, with the current NPDS discharge limits that you have. You know, there's always the opportunity for the state to come in and change things again. They're good at doing that, but that's, you know, that's a moving target we're not sure of. But for current permit conditions, uh, there aren't any additional items you'd have to add to the plant.
Okay. Thank you. I understood that perfectly now. Thanks for it. No engineer talk. Thanks.
Any other questions, interns? Any, I have a motion, I have a second roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Hey.
I, I have a question.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Could we get a, could we get a total of where we are on this sewer treatment plant now? At this moment?
Yeah, I can put that, up-to-date information in the packet tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, item number six, uh, report and recommendation, pay request, partial maximal construction of, of the north water treatment plant Phase 1, not to exceed three-hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and five cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Shark?
Just briefly, what was done for this three-hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars?
Before he answers the question, and, and I agree he should, will answer that question, any one of our Alderman here could go out there and see what construction's being done on that site anytime they want. I, I mean, I'm not trying to skate around. That is open to anyone on this council, or any one of our staff could go out there and see what's going on. You know, so, uh, we, we're not trying to hide anything here, but everything's open to you guys.
I understand. Eugene, let me just say one thing.
This...
Hang on. Go ahead, Mr. Woods.
Yeah, to help you out, um, or some of the other Alderman, I can print out some of the stuff. I've been there quite a few times, taken pictures, uh, just for this, this purpose, so that we could see. It's pretty amazing, some of the things that are being done there, and it's hard to get to. You have to really walk over the mounds of dirt and fight your way through it. So I don't know that everybody'd be able to walk around over there, but I am willing to print out those pictures or put them on a disc for somebody to look at.
Hey. Ed, go ahead.
Briefly, most of the activities this month have been involved with pouring concrete, excavation work and pouring concrete for the tunnel. The pipe tunnel is between the aeration tanks and digestors. Then also the bottom slab of the aeration tank, there was a large pour that was about a two-hundred cubic yards of concrete they poured in one day for that. And so that's been the majority of the work, is for concrete pours and then piping for those deeper areas. So we're working from the center of the plant out, and that's why it's, you know, sequencing is kind of critical for getting to the admin building part of it, too. But most of the activities have been concrete work.
Thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Jeff, is Beckman Woodman supposed to be overseeing this project?
No.
They're the, they're, they assist staff secondarily, but H.R. Green is the head coordinator of the project.
So is staff there every day?
They attend the weekly, uh, meetings at the treatment plant construction site.
Okay. So H&R Green is basically the head? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have a motion, I have a second on roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
I'll say yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Report and recognition, partial pay requests for MQ construction, water main replacement project, not, not to exceed amount of $442,691.05. And 90 cents, I'm sorry. That is my motion. Second. Questions? Alderman Joe Coles?
When are they gonna finish? Central, the people are complaining. They don't, they didn't clean the dust up, they didn't do anything to wash the street down or anything. They had a, last Saturday, they had a sweeper there, and all they did was disturb the mud. When are they gonna get that street done? And what about Sunnyside? Sunnyside's been the same way. So there's two streets that are in Ward One, which is the mayor's ward, and mine, that are, I wouldn't drive my car down. And so, what's the scoop?
I apologize, I didn't introduce, this is Lou Hausman from Baxman Woodman. He's gonna be one of our new representatives. You're probably wondering who he was, so.
Sorry.
I'll let him answer it. Do I have any question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. At this point, the water main work from MQ on both Central and Sunnyside has been completed, and the roads now are turned over to the road contractor, PLODI.
I came by there today. They're still working on stuff there. You can't drive down the street, except on the wrong side of the road.
Yeah, we've got a lot of road work to do out there. They, they're just doing concrete work right now and starting some of the driveways, but that's the PLODI construction, the road contractors portion of the project. And I can work with them, try to see if we can get the thing cleaned up better out there. But there's a lot of work that still needs to be done through the road construction project. This, the water main is the MQ contractors. So there are, there is a lot of work still being done on those two streets through PLODI, the road contractor.
They ain't gonna pour some, they ain't gonna pour blacktop in November?
No, sir.
Like they did on our street.
Currently, they're working on the concrete, the curb and the driveways, and the grinding should start next week on the streets.
Okay.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
So when's the project gonna be done?
They didn't say.
He didn't say. But, yeah.
The, the water main project or the road project, sir?
The road project.
The road project, we still have quite a bit to go. That's coming up here under the PLODI report. We've got, at this point, we still have to do the grinding, which is gonna take a couple weeks.
That's the next item.
That's the next item. We've got some, we've got curb work to do.
So you...
Couple months still, I would say, at this point.
You don't have a date. You're unprepared.
We'll just sum it up. The water main portion of the contract's about 95% done. The PLODI street portion of the contract is only about 15% done, 12 to 15% done. So you're gonna have a lot more time yet with the street portion of the project, but the water main portion is essentially done, but you've still got that overlap with the street portion. So about 12 to 15% has only been done with the street, so you've got a while yet to go.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
This, this question's not the, about the project here. It's about Baxman Woodman.
That will be discussed later down the line, I guess. Why, is it...
Is this on the agenda or no? I mean, this is our third guy here.
I understand, but that doesn't detain the public works, it ain't on the agenda right now.
Well, I, I have a problem because he's, as far as I'm concerned, he's not prepared to answer the question, and we're putting it to the city manager.
Okay.
And my question is, let me finish my question. We keep on getting different people here. And this is the CEO of Baxman Woodman. We had Steve Zainer that was let go, and now we have, now we got Al Stefan that was let go, and now, the last week, I had a different guy here.
Okay.
I wanna know who, who's supposed to be here, who's supposed to answer these questions? And, and I mean...
And we will, and, and we will have Jeff let you know on that.
I want him to answer it, he's the CEO.
We, we aren't going to get into debate with an engineer firm and knowing where the public works. It's not on the agenda right now. The, if you wanna take that offline, that's fine, but to do it, we, we work on the projects here, okay? Maybe the other guy had a vacation day, they couldn't make it.
Then I'll, then I'll ask the chairman of finance to bring it up.
Okay. My, my question to you, the, the other question that rose on this project, and I, I will share that with you guys. It seems like PLODI's subcontractor that does the concrete work, that's been doing the road projects, has been let go due to the fact is that they are not performing the right duties and, and that, they have another contractor in there now doing the projects. PLODI's subcontractor was let go yesterday, I believe, and they, they assure us that they, they have another contractor coming in, or else they going to do the concrete work. Go ahead.
Sure, yes, that's correct. PLODI subcontractor doing the concrete work was let go as yesterday. They were not responsive to staff and city requests. They had some poor issues with scheduling. We listed them out, enumerated them, sent a letter to PLODI. They've agreed to remove that subcontractor from the project. They're now going to perform the concrete work tomorrow themselves to button up anything that the other subcontractor did, and then they'll bring in a new subcontractor, which they'll let us know about tomorrow or Monday. So that, the other old subcontractor has been removed from the job, and PLODI will work tomorrow to button up anything that they had excavated. But PLODI said they'll stand behind it and take care of the work that they were under contract to do.
Right. So that's, that's a reason, too, Joe.
All I, all I wanna know is, I don't want any blacktop dro, in that section. I don't care if they have to go all went along, but no, I don't want any blacktop dropped in, in, in November.
That's understood.
Because November is cold, and by the time they get it there, that's what ruined our street and, and, uh, because the, the, the blacktop just fell apart, it didn't glue itself. So they had to come in and seal them. Whoever heard of a brand-new street being sealed within two weeks after it was bored? I never saw one. So something was wrong. And I kept hollering and hollering, and it all went unduffed there. So if you, you stop for, and I'm gonna park my truck in the middle of the street, and I hope you tow it away.
Okay.
The, the project completion date for the road program is far before November. Right. It's, we're gonna have the job done much before that. It should be done by the end of September with the substantial completion and punchless work in October, but there won't be paving in November on that project.
Okay, we'll see.
Okay.
So I have a motion, I have a second on roll call vote, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And number, number eight, report and recognition, pay, pay request number one, partial PLODI construction for road resurgence project, not to exceed $179,096.05. That is my motion. Second.
I got a question.
Question? Alderman Coles?
What did they, what did they blacktop for $179,000? I, I ain't seen anything being blacktopped in the city.
I believe it was Shamile.
Yep, that's all, that's, that they, they did that all this year.
What, yeah...
Wait, let, let, let him answer the question.
Yes, sir. This is the partial payment number one for the job. They started back on July 23rd. To date, they've done curb and gutter and sidewalk and concrete driveways on Paramount, Heritage, Carter Court, Manning Drive and Shamile Lane. Started the curb and sidewalk at the city hall and at Oak Lane. We've added parking lot work at the fire station, probably to be doing some work out there, so they started looking at that. And we've added some patching, resurfacing work at 237 Murray Lane east of Cedar. So what they've done basically so far is concrete work, the curb, the sidewalk, concrete driveways. They'll begin doing the grinding next week.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley.
You mentioned about the fire department?
Yes, sir.
Was that included in this contract?
No, that was not included in the contract as awarded. That is work that the staff has been recommending adding to the contract.
So what's this, what's, is this, how much is it over the, the fire department?
Go ahead.
The estimated work at the fire station was $73,500. It has not been performed yet.
And that's for you know the fire department is paying us back.
This is a pay request, how many pay requests are they getting on this project?
This one's the number one for 12%. There's probably another, I'd say four, to project completion, maybe three, three to four.
Alderman Shark.
On Prospect Avenue, the 200 block, they're sawing into the curbing in a number of spots, and the curbing seems to be okay in that area. I'm just wondering, all I've seen so far is the saw cut every so often. Why is that being done, do you know?
Yeah, the, the saw cutting into the curb is to facilitate the future removal of the curb pieces adjacent to the saw cuts, and allow them to pull that out without damaging the curb to remain. We have had issues with the subcontractor in terms of doing some work and then leaving the site for a long period of time, not coming back in a timely fashion. It's one of the reasons that staff recommended their removal from the contract and having PLODI bring in a new subcontractor. There's been some problems with construction staging out there with them.
And if I may?
Go ahead.
For the city manager, I've had a couple of citizens that live on Prospect call and want to know why they weren't informed that we were going to be doing that road work there. Normally, I thought we did send out a letter to the areas that were adjacent to what we're doing any work on, and this gentleman, a couple of people, said they hadn't received anything, and they're wondering what's going on.
Jeff?
Alderman Shaki, I'm aware of the situation you're referencing. I did actually correspond with one of those residents, and I asked for a couple of addresses. Typically, we do notify and let the residents know what's going on in the area, that's why I needed the address. I'm corresponding back with them to figure out, you know, what happened, if there was a mix-up, and I've been discussing it with him directly.
Appreciate it. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Is POTI doing the sidewalks on Pyramid, on Pyramid and in that area over there?
Yes, sir. PLODI will be doing it, work right now until they can find a concrete subcontractor.
So they're doing this...
They just took over yesterday.
But they're doing the sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I've got a lot of complaints, the residents have already done the work, that they, that they leaving the, the mess there, when they take out the, the forms and stuff, they leave the clumps of grass there and everything else, and they sat there for so long, the residents got tired of it, started doing it themselves.
I know exactly what you're talking about. This was their subcontractor was engaged in that behavior. PLODI now is going to take over and do the work on those sidewalks going forward and the rest of the project, that the subcontractor was not performing correctly in that case.
And that's the reason why the subcontractor...
I hope that we're gonna be deducting some funds for that, on that. I mean, I'm gonna be looking for that in, in the final payout for, for neglect on their part. They're responsible for their subcontractors, so.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second on a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine, report and recognition, pay request, number six, the final payment to AM coating, painting of the water storage reservoir three and four, repainting, not to exceed $43,483.05. That is the, the reservoir by the firehouse there. It was a grass they had doing all that, so it is finally completed.
Two tanks.
So that is my motion. Second. Questions? Servants?
But painting?
On a roll call, please. Roll call vote.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Item number 10, report and recognition, vehicle replacement, 507 slash 185 CFM air compressor purchase in, in amount not to exceed $17,765.05. That is my motion. Second. Question, Mike?
This, uh, air compressor out of service, no longer working? Why are we replacing it?
I...
How long have we had it?
It was...
I know John's not here, I'm sorry.
It's from 1990, 1990?
I just wanted to know if it was, I know it's replacement, I just wanna make sure we're not...
Yeah, I believe it's in...
No, we aren't any anymore.
Pretty bad disrepair.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, any other questions on a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Item number 11, report and recognition, contract award to GNP for the city-owned LED streetlights conversion not to exceed $223,150.05. I will make that as a firm motion, but I have a couple of questions. So do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley, you wanna start?
This is a budget item.
Jeff?
Yes.
You may. The conversion of city-owned lights, how many lights are this? Are these?
It was in the memo.
Hang on.
There's 357.
Is that the total?
That's the total we would replace. There's more, but those are on, you know, Wooddale Road, Irving Park Road, within our jurisdiction, but more difficult to replace. This is side streets, industrial park.
These are?
Yeah, the 357 accounted for in the memo, yeah.
Okay.
We're not talking Irving Park Road, Wooddale Road, anything like that.
Do we own any of them in Irving?
Well, we just put lights, ornamental lighting, so...
Well, yeah, that I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Shark.
That's 357 out of a total of how many streetlights in Wooddale? How many does the electric company have?
Price, you may. 547.
537?
547.
So it's about 200 and, 200 approximately that are gonna stay the same as they are now.
Right now, but in the future, we could convert those over as well. The thought was to do the easier ones to get started, start saving money now, start to do the easier ones to get started. Start saving money now, start reducing pollution now, and then move on towards the other lights down the road if we so choose.
You know, if I may...
Go ahead.
As I mentioned before, it's a bad time. And if you were going to do just Wooddale Road and just Irving, it may be one, I, one thing, but to do individual lights on the side streets, and not all of them, that's what, approximately two hundred of each, it's gonna be a little confusing, I think, to have LED lights in one, and then down the street there's gonna have a regular light. And I, I, I don't see the need at this point to change to LED. It'd be nice to. And if the economy was as, was as it was three, four years ago, great. But we're spending money here that isn't, I don't think, necessary. It's just to make it look a little different. And sometimes these LED lights really don't enhance, they may light it up a little bit more, but they don't enhance the side street neighborhoods. They kind of, they're, they're a very, how do you say, blaring light. And the residents actually prefer the soft lights that we have, have now.
Mr. Murphy.
Just, uh, address a couple of your concerns, Alderman Shaki. One, we did have Baxter and Woodman go out and do a site test of these lights with our current lights, and they perform, you know, on par to the current lights. Um, the second item that you mentioned was the, the rough economic times, and times are rough. And this is a good idea to do this, because within two and a half years, we're actually saving money. You're saving money on maintenance costs, you're saving money on power costs. So if you don't do this, you'll end up paying more in the long run than not doing it. So this would save you money.
Alderman Shaki.
I can follow up. My wife's here, but that's, it, it sounds like sometimes when my wife wants to buy something, she said, "We better get it now, so it doesn't cost us more later on." And that, I don't think that's a really good argument at any time, especially when you, I personally believe in paying things as you can afford to pay them. And, uh, we're, we're, we seem to be taking that surplus we have by being fiscally responsible and just basically throwing it out the window. Thank you. Just, Mike. Mike.
You're not replacing lights, you, the LED will last a lot longer.
Make up that amount, want to?
Alderman...
Make up two hundred thousand?
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Jeff. I remember when ComEd was here, that they, that we pay forty dollars per light. Is that their light for the power, or is that our light that we're paying for the power?
Mr. Murphy.
I, I really don't know how to answer that question, to tell you the truth. Um, I don't, Price, if you have a...
Because we've had lights on all, all the time, and...
This is actually, this is, uh, Price's hours. He's, uh, is the one that submitted the proposal and the packet.
This is just...
And I've been your neighbor for thirteen years. I live here in Wooddale, and my father for ten years before I. Um, the ComEd lights are not even part of any of this proposal. Those are, uh, a light program that you folks lease from ComEd.
Let me stop you right there. That's not, that's not my question. I guess it's for a finance question, too. Do we not pay forty dollars per light for the power for, for our lights? Per pole?
I was, I wasn't asked to explore that, so I'm unable to respond to that.
This, that's a finance question for our finance department. Because I, I remember we had this discussion before, when the power's out for the light, do we get billed for it? Does ComEd give it back to us? Do you remember?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're prepared?
And, to an extent. Um, I, I'll say the answer that isn't as clear-cut is, these are one, and that's another. Um, you are correct. When the lights, the ComEd lights go out that we get billed for, and Public Works calls them in, and we say, "Hey, the light at one, two, three lane is out," um, they mark that down, and then when they fix it, they give us a credit on the bill for however long it was out. Depending on the type of the streetlight it is, some of them, they just bill at a flat rate. Others, they do have a meter on and bill per kilowatt hour. Um, it's whether like the overnight lights, or whether the lights are on a photocell. So there is some differentiation between the type of light, whether it's a, like a streetlight, unlike more arterial, or if it's on the side. They, they do have some different billing metrics in there. Um, but you are correct that some of them, we do get billed just a flat amount, because what they do is they found that over the course of a year, it comes out to about forty, forty dollars. Because in the summer, the lights are on a shorter duration than they are in the winter. So they effectively budget, uh, monthly budget their own lights to the municipalities.
So in return of savings monies within the next two years, that's not a proper statement? I would think not, because ComEd is just gonna charge us the forty dollars per light as an average.
Well, the streetlights that the city owns, those are all metered. So, so there's a difference between the city-owned streetlights and the ComEd streetlights. And Price, correct me if I'm wrong, the ComEd ones are the ones on the wooden poles, and the cement or metal poles are the cities. So the ones that are on the wooden poles, typically speaking, are like the forty-dollar-a-month ones, and the ones on the metal or concrete poles are ours that they all have meters at various points in towns that we get billed for.
Every single one has a meter?
Not every single one. There's one master control box for, like, for example, Bristol Park, all this, all the lights up there, there's one meter for all of Bristol Park. And we get billed for all of the lights in there on one bill.
I'd like to see, I will have Mr. Kramer show me that when he gets back. Cause I'm eager to see that. Okay. This is a proposal only, correct? This is not, this didn't go off a bid or anything? Jeff.
Purchase the lights.
Not just install? Just to purchase?
Purchase and install.
Purchase and install.
The lights, yeah. Keep in mind, there, it's not, it's listed as two hundred and twenty-three thousand, but right now, there's grant funding reimbursement for eighty-six thousand. So that would bring the total down to one hundred and thirty-six thousand. You don't know when grant money's gonna go away. It's available now. So if we waited down the line, could be there, could not. Just one thing to consider.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Is this, where's this, from the city? Where's this company located?
Naples, twenty-three years old.
Naples, Florida?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
We manufacture in Florida and here in St. Charles.
Okay. I'm, okay. Nothing, nothing against you, sir, but we have a light company coming into Wooddale, so that's why I was wondering. So, thank you. Mr. Woods?
Yeah, my question is the, more the functional side. I remember there were questions of the lighting, the throw of the light, the intensity, luminums or whatever. And there was arguments over how you measure LED lights versus incandescent, you know, sodium vapor, all those other things. Are those issues, have they been ironed out, looked at, and asked and answered, I guess is the question, before we put up three hundred and fifty-seven lights nobody likes?
Unless I'm incorrect, a thorough study was done, and they've been signed off on as being equal to the lights currently out there.
That's correct. Glare and all that.
We did do, do a side-by-side testing out in a dark area without other light coming in, and they performed equal to the existing light fixture. Um, the LED does have a different color sometimes than the traditional fixture, but the level of glare was not discernible, um, different, not discernibly different. And the light, uh, performance was the same.
So the, the, the level of lighting is unchanged?
Yeah, the uniformity, the foot candles, yes. Those were, those were very close to each other.
All right. And I have one other question, if I could follow up.
Go ahead.
So my understanding is you're gonna retro, obviously retrofit the existing, uh, light poles, fixtures. Net six hundred, if my math is correct, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and seven cents per fixture slash light bulb, if you will.
Installed, correct. It varies. Uh, on some of the higher wattage ones, they're in the six-twenty range. For the, uh, the lower wattage, those are in the four hundred dollar range.
But is that just changing a bulb? Although I know the LED's not a bulb, but is there a lens or a prism or other components that go with it?
We remove everything that's in the existing fixture, the light, the reflector, the, the transformer capacitor, and then we insert what's called a light engine in its place, and then button up the existing fixture. So aesthetically, um, to the untrained eye, no one's gonna know. The only big difference here is that you'll save seventy-four percent on your energy bill for approximately the next twenty-two years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Christine, we're here.